All right, so it's four thirty. We're gonna go ahead and get the work session up and going. So I know we've got a couple of different things scheduled and we'll get everybody through. We've got a few things on the agenda that may take a little bit of time during the work session. And we've got the regular meeting coming up at five thirty. So thank you, everybody, for being here. I appreciate you coming. We did ask for Mr. Brian Jones, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation, to kind of do an update as to some things that are going on with Parks and Recreation. This is kind of continuing with a trend of having department heads give updates of a bigger picture of their department during the work session. And then following that, we asked Chief Prather to give kind of some updates on some issues with fire and public safety. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So along with giving an update with the Recreation Department, we're kind of giving an overview of how the Recreation Department kind of started off. I want to thank Jared Rappaport. He's the one who kind of gave him an idea of what I wanted to do the presentation on. All the graphics are Jared, stuff he does in his free time. He's very, very talented. So the presentation, I kind of gave him a little idea and he basically ran with it. So this is what it's gonna look like. So go through the presentation. It's kind of an overview of Recreation Department. So Jared created this map right here. This kind of gives you an overview of everything that is at thirteen twenty-nine camp. Of course, we have the eight ball fields, softball fields, Rotary Park, Music Park, Boys and Girls Club, Community Center. We have two tracks, one is a half-mile track as well as our quarter-mile track, outdoor basketball courts, and also the county pool that's at the property. And for the most part, has pretty much stayed the same for several years. Our services include group sports facilitation, which will be all recreation, sports, basketball, football, baseball, softball. We do offer soccer. We don't run the program, but they play through our facilities. Cheer, also cheers at our facilities, but we don't offer the program. Also banquet rooms, pavilion rentals, especially during the holidays. I know we work with Fire EMS and they have training for our rooms to do classes and stuff. Equipment rentals would be anything from sports equipment to anything like that. Charity, nonprofit partnerships. We also have the emergency shelter that we had used several times since I've become the Director. And we have free Wi-Fi at the Community Center now that was donated by ETC. Like I was saying, our facilities, two indoor courts and one outdoor court. We've got pickleball now. We have two indoor courts, but can expand to four if needed. Volleyball, it's not used a lot, but we actually have it out today, believe it or not. Baseball softball fields is basically the same thing. We have soccer fields. We have outdoor track, like I was talking about, swing pool, banquet room, free Wi-Fi, the covered pavilions, playground, and the music park. This is more pictures that Jared included. So throughout the years, Roper Park, I think the Roper Park started out back in the seventies. And then, so this is the first picture that Jared could come up on. In nineteen ninety-two, we had six fields. We got the pavilion and had the county pool. County pool was built in nineteen eighty-six, still in use today. We're getting close to our fortieth anniversary in twenty twenty-six. So that would be a milestone. As you can see, of course, for those who don't know, Roper Park was a former airport. It is very narrow and not very wide. So we've got a lot squeezed into a very, very tight space. Up at the top, of course, the tops of the property where the chicken house is below. Moving into ninety-nine, two thousands, they updated it. They got two new fields, the maintenance building, also the Recreation Department, which was an old mobile home. That mobile home was taken out back in twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, I think. We took it out and that area just basically is grass at this point. More pictures of, you know, the old facilities. So throughout the years, of course, they included the multipurpose field out at the bottom. In two thousand and seven, that was primarily where soccer played at. Anything from U-six all the way up to U-twelve. And then the playground was included in two thousand and eight. Outdoor basketball court in two thousand and nine. Community Center in two thousand and eleven. Pictures. In two thousand and twelve, with conjunction with Rotary, they broke ground with Rotary Park. And since that time, Rotary Park has kind of taken off. You have not only the Rotary Park, but you also have the musical equipment that's there as well. It's a very neat little area. Along with other items, the Boys and Girls Club was established in twenty seventeen. That's a picture of that place. Of course, I was talking about the musical park. I don't know if Rotary's gonna be adding any more pieces. I think they're done for right now. But they are constantly trying to improve that area and it's a great addition to Roper. And that's a picture of it. In twenty twenty-one, and with the help of Chairman Stansel, we entered an IGA with the City of Jasper to use their ball fields in the City of Jasper for overflow and for practices. Just this past season, we actually played games down at the city ball fields. When our, when our numbers are high, it gives us a great ability to expand. Some parents are okay with us going down to the city fields and playing ball games and some are not. But when our program is getting as big as it is, it's nice to have fields that are not only bigger, but have the capability of having lights. And I'll get to the light portion here in a little bit. But Pickens County Park and Rec is one of the least lit fields in North Georgia. There's only two lit fields that we have right now and those were done back in the nineties, probably the eighties. And we're trying to rectify that. Also, at the same time that we were coming online with the city, we also worked out an agreement to take over the old football stadium. We are now referring to that as the PCRT Soccer Complex. All soccer is run out of the old high school now. We've got U-six all the way up to U-twelve playing on the old field. Keep the grass going, keep it looking good. Soccer community has, they love playing there. So for the time being, that will be the home of all Recreation Soccer for the most part. Some of the activities that we offer at the rec department, that's just a kind of a list that we have. Some of our groups that we typically deal with more often than not would be Karen Dawson and her fitness classes. Also, we have the Quilting Guild that's there several times a month doing their thing. Also karate, Richard Bruce's karate is there twice a week. And then pickleball is there pretty much every day of the week. And now they're there on Sundays as well. We're offering classes just for teens on Sunday. And I'll show you that ad when we get up to it. So like I said, catch support group, they don't come as often as they did, but they're always still welcome. And Karen Dawson's cardio class. And all these flyers were made by Jared. They just kind of gave Jared an idea and he's basically made all these flyers for these different groups. Chess Club, Choose to Lose, they are a Friday group with Miss Pat Rose. Then conversational English, Richard Bruce's karate. We offered a mixed martial arts class for youth that started back in the summertime. And very nice people, but they'll stay at the rec center for a while. Pickleball is huge, folks. Chris knows that pickleball is huge because he gets calls about it all the time. So we've got four indoor courts. Basically, we have multipurpose our courts in the rec center. We lay down lines where they can play games. They're there every single day of the week. They're there on Sundays now as well. It's very low of an impact for the staff. It's basically, they pretty much regulate themselves. They set all their stuff up. It's a very nice group to have and the building is getting constantly used by the pickleball group. And it's also free. And that's the free play. Swing dance lessons, Tai Chi. Quilting Guild is huge. Quilting Guild comes probably two or three times a year and basically gets one of the rooms for the entire week. And they'll have twenty-something ladies there and they're sitting there and they're making their quilts. And very nice group of ladies and they'll continue with us as long as they're able to. Young with Karen Dawson, she also does the fitness classes as well. So sports programs are growing, like I was talking about with the baseball fields. That took over in twenty thirteen. We were, our program was split between not only the Recreation Department, but with the City of Jasper. Since that time, the City of Jasper has consolidated and we now run all of the youth baseball in Pickens County. This past year, we had five hundred and sixty-eight kids playing baseball and then four hundred and six playing basketball. We have had a hundred and sixty-four kids playing football. And I think we maybe up, maybe four or five kids from the twenty twenty-two year for football. So sports programs, our prices have remained the same even throughout the pandemic. We're trying to keep the price point pretty low and basically just get them a uniform, get them into play ball, and it's had a small expense to the parents. Some of the things we've done at the park before sponsors became available is trying to beautify the park. We redid all our back cages. And if you had a chance to look at the back cages beside Field Two, they're now been vandalized. We're trying to go back and replace all of the cross poles because somebody was using them as a thing to pin them. So that's a, that's a constant hassle to work with. We also replaced the dugouts. These monies that'll be used for, especially the dugouts, was there a partnership with Coca-Cola. The money they give to the rec department was put right back into the program. We're able to replace the dugouts on Field One and Field Two. And this past summer, we did pretty much a seventy-five percent overhaul of our playground. Before, the playground had a piece of equipment that was several years old. You can barely see it's the red slot right there. It's already cracking, just weathered. And we had to take that out for safety issues while we were working. It also has vandalism on the outside railing. All of that was rotten and basically we took everything up. We put a new plastic border around it. We put a new piece of equipment on and new mulch. And it looks a million times better down there. That was a, that was a great project, but we got done fairly quickly. Also with sponsor monies, we redid LED lighting or did LED lighting in the gymnasium. When you went in the gym, it kind of had a brown, tannish color. We took all those lights out, put brand-new LED lighting that will last for a long time and will keep us from having to get up on the sky lift to basically change light bulbs out continuously throughout the year. So it looks completely different in the gym now with the new lighting. So park upgrades. So this is a schematic of how the new lightings is gonna look at the park. Talked to North Carolina Electric yesterday and all this stuff has been, has been ordered. They are waiting for it to come in. He said hopefully they'll be on the property by September or that finish date by January. That's what he said. So if you take a look at this right here, the only thing that's different is these lights right here on the multipurpose field will be on this side pointing this way instead of where they are pointing that way. So we'll have LED lighting on Field Two all the way down through Field Eight. And then we'll have LED lights for our multipurpose field. So we went from having no lights to the whole park being lit up. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be so nice. Also with the rec department, we are, I am very, very active in social media. Stuff put out there. We have a Facebook site, we have two Facebook sites, actually. We have Twitter, we have Instagram. Still haven't figured out Instagram yet, so. But we try to push all of our stuff through our social media. Or that's the pickrec.com website or our Facebook site. It's funny, when we started the Facebook page in twenty thirteen, I think we may have had like maybe a hundred likes. Right now, we're at three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine and about four thousand people follow the rec department's Facebook site. So we have, our outreach is pretty good when it comes to social media. And our Twitter page. Partner with community. I touched on that a few minutes ago, talking about working with Fire and EMS. That's just kind of a list of the groups that we work with. The way we do things in the rec department is as long as you're not charging somebody, we're gonna give you free access, we're gonna give you free space. So if it's something for a benefit or if it's something where you're a nonprofit and you're not gonna charge people for it, we're gonna give you the free space. So that's just a list of the groups we've worked with. Assistant agencies, American Red Cross, the facts. American Red Cross is near and near my heart. My father was an avid blood donation gentleman. And since that time, when the pandemic shut pretty much everything down, we were one of the few places that you could actually go and get blood. Since that time, we've basically become the hub for all of blood donations in Pickens County as far as outside agencies. Just this year alone, we've done about ten blood drops. So I mean, they like coming there, we like having them there. It gives me a good chance to go get blood myself while they're there. So we really partnered up with the American Red Cross. And, you know, when we were shut down during the pandemic, we were working with the Health Department on vaccinations and working with voter registration office with early voting and things of that nature. Community sponsors, that's just a snapshot of people who have donated to the Recreation Department, whether it be monetarily or just helping us out. We would not be where we're at without the community, without our volunteers, coaching, and things of that nature. That's really what has built our program to what it is today. Standing gratitude to our Recreation Advisory Board, and that's actually where I'm going after this meeting. It's our advisory board meeting that we have scheduled out. And of course, the Board of Commissioners. And like I said, just thank you to the citizens of Pickens County. It's been an honor to have been here. It'll be ten years next March. Doesn't seem like that long, but it is. And it's a great place to work, it's a great place to raise kids. And I'm happy to be your servant. So have any questions?
My favorite part was how he kept a straight face whenever he talked about working with the Elections Office. And how excited he seemed to be.
It's been challenging, but I think we have a workable plan now. We're moving there, I think the community here in, I think it's gonna make flow so much better than it has been.
I think now that we know that that is to keep from confusing voters, it's gonna be the location now kind of let them find the traffic and how to flow and how to keep people informed is, is good.
Yes, sir.
So I think, obvious, you guys are doing a great job, so.
We appreciate it. If you have any PowerPoint presentations, please ask Jared Rappaport. That is his specialty.
Brian, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Good job, Brian.
Next on the agenda for the meeting is Chief Prather to go over. I will preface Chief Prather coming up to go over some of the topics with the conversation that he and I had had leading up to, based on just what's going on in public safety in Alden, Georgia. And so ask him to kind of see if he could look into some research so he can get the facts and know exactly what's happening. So I'll turn the floor over to the chief.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for a lot of the time we've come before you this evening and speak. Before I get started, I'd like to say thank you to the director. I coached twenty years down in the dark. The signal lights out, the field's done on the end. Okay, so I saw a long time coming on this. I appreciate that. I'm not coaching anymore, but I do appreciate that. Again, thank you for allowing me to come before you this evening. The main point of this, way before I get started, I know two Commissioners may not be aware, you know, we've got a new look, we're starting a sport, our uniforms are just now coming in. And we've come out with a new patch this year that, that's give our guys a shot of motivation. And this is our new design. We haven't really publicly just released it. But we want to come up with a patch that was reflective of our country and our state and our county. And got a little hung up on how to represent our county. But if you look on our patch now, you'll see the American flag for our country, our state flag, part of it for our state. And we put the dragons in there for our dragon community. So that's on our patches now. Everybody just seems to be different within the department. Kind of a shot of motivation for our guys. I've had one year where we went back down our back in our new uniforms. Anyway, throw that in there. You know, I've been here four or five months now and I'm really impressed on the, on the staff that I've walked in to see out here in the field working, you know, across the board and just public safety in general. We've got some challenges of keeping personnel. And had a conversation a couple of weeks ago that a guy had worked a bunch of overtime. You know, he said, Chief, you know, this is really a good place to work, but I can't even pay my bills. He worked several days of overtime and he likes it here. And I said, just hang in there with me. We're gonna, we're gonna try to work on some of the things that we're dealing with, especially from the conversation. So what I've done over the last couple of weeks, I reached out to all of my friends in North Georgia, basically, several fire departments to see what the salaries are for firefighter, EMTs and firefighter paramedics. And it was coming in every day as recent as this morning. I had Justin number this morning to get, get on there. But to get started, before we get to some of those, those numbers. Crank the fire truck, but I can't crank that. And I can't tell this thing, North Georgia Firefighter EMS Conversation Comparison. Just a brief overview of where we're at today. Today, we have thirty-one full-time field operations personnel. And I stand here today with eleven vacancies. I've hired a couple and I've lost a couple, all in four or five months. So I haven't gained since I came in the door. We do have fifteen part-time personnel that works and helps us out. Sometimes that's, that's a challenge to really get them when we truly need them. But, you know, in my opinion, we need fifty-one personnel to staff the four stations adequately that we're staffing right now. And that's seventeen per day. And to get to that number, we're running four full-time amputations twenty-four hours a day. That's two people. And then we've got the four engines that from some days, you know, we don't even staff it. We don't have to staff it for it. But usually, there's only one man on that engine. And it's, it's a bad feeling to put up on, on something as small as a car fire with one man on the fire truck. I mean, it's dangerous for our guys, so. But that, that's where we're at today. You know, I like to say our folks are really committed to working here, the ones that we have. A lot of departments around us, recent this morning, we had a part-time call in this morning. Couldn't come in because he's on mandatory overtime at his other job. You know, that's something we haven't had to do here because of the people stepping up that we have, pulling a lot of overtime. And you don't see this until you're out there in the field watching these guys work. One guy worth a big shift straight. You know, that's tough. If you've got a family and, you know, a personal life, that's tough. But that's some of the commitment of the people we've got working for us here that truly love working here. And more personnel are separated since I've been here under my command. I know we've lost six this year. Every one of them went for more money, you know, the bigger salaries. I lost one just two weeks ago, like six dollars more an hour for the job that he, he left here for. So that's, that's what we're faced with right now in the fire department. It's not just us, it's not exclusive to us. Statewide, most fire departments are under staff. It's hard to get beat them in the door right now. COVID impacted workforce. I put that missing in action. I don't know where everybody went. You know, before COVID, you know, we didn't have the challenges we have now. But I don't, I don't know if it's because they're paying more to stay at home or what. But I think in general, you know, we've lost the workforce. That causes departments to start trying to pull from other departments. I dealt with it from a former employee. And if you go south of here, they're really throwing higher salaries out and people are buying. Increased, you know, way, way above what we're, we're doing. We're dealing with the salaries being thrown out there now, the high salaries. And then I think we deal with the generational work ethic differences. It's what I'm calling it, is career versus dollar. I came into this thirty years ago. I wasn't really focused that much on the dollars. I was, I loved the job. You know, we still got some guys here that's been here with us many years, twenty-plus years, that came in for the same reason. But what I'm seeing, my personal experience, these younger guys coming in now, they get their training and they're chasing the dollars. They're hopping from department to department because they're paying more. So that's a big change in my, my career, my lifetime that that's, is hard to accept. You know, I love the job. There's still a lot of people in here in the profession that loves it. But now the younger generation is chasing that dollar versus looking for that career. So that's a challenge for us. EMS transport agencies are hit harder. What that means is fire departments that, that operate ambulances. I dealt with it at my former employment as well. Prior to, I think two thousand and thirteen is when we combined here, Pickens and Pickens EMS fourteen. You know, used to have the fire department. The guys fought fire, run accidents, et cetera, and they did a first responder. Then we combined, we got the ambulance service in here. So you went from doing one job and now the guys are doing two jobs. They gotta maintain two certifications now to operate, you know, in the fire department. And we're hit harder, you know, especially since COVID hit back in twenty twenty, that's when it started. Our ambulance guys, when you're on that ambulance, you're really getting beat down. And there's no way to truly describe that to you unless you're out there. You know, you're on the ambulance and you pull into a hospital. We've had ambulances sit in the hospital for six hours because they can't get a bed for the patient they're already in there. That really beats down my guys. I mean, it really, really beats them down. We lost a good medic first of the year before I came to work here for that very reason. He worked at another job and came here and he was just getting beat down between both departments because of that, what they call wall time. So the ambulance side of the house really beats up on us. And I'm not talking more about that here as I go through these slides, but I want to paint that picture that having the ambulance service in with the fire department is a challenge. You know, we've got to roll those ambulances. I mean, you've got to staff them. And I think on the fireside, it hurts us. Because we've got to keep those ambulances staffed. I reached out to North Georgia. I'm the Secretary of the, of North Georgia, Northwest Georgia Fire Chiefs Association. I reached out to all of my friends and I got a response back from thirteen departments on salaries. And I just want to recognize the, Gummer County, Gordon, Fanning, Muntown, Dawson, Union, Bartow. I reached out to Cherokee City where they're at today. I know they're south of us, but Walker County and then City of Kauanoo, Carterville, El J and Jasper participated in this when I reached out to everyone. These are how the numbers came back in. Really surprisingly, Dawson County is paying the firefighters and medics bigger salaries than anybody out of these thirteen that we dealt with. Now, I didn't go south. I didn't go down to Johnson Creeks and the Milton's and all of that because I thought we were gonna be dealing with there. If you see the firefighter EMT in Dawson County is drawing, making forty-eight thousand nine-ten at base pay. And if you look at those departments, well, I've got the asterisk down beside them. Those departments are paying incentives on top of this base salary. So you're looking at a base salary in even in Dawson County at forty-eight nine-ten. I'm telling you, in Dawson County, and there's a slide for this, that when the guys are on the ambulance, they're giving them two dollars more an hour when they're riding the ambulance. So they're not fussing about the ambulance, so they're making more money on that ambulance. Dawson County come out on, on COH. And if you've noticed, Pickens County ranked among all these right here, just in general. This is a mix of departments that transport and departments that don't. We're just, what, three up to the bottom. Only Bartow County and El J are making less than what our guys are. I'll have another slide on Bartow County. You see an asterisk there, they've got incentives. So it really bumps this number up with their incentives. But that, that's how we're ranked in the counties. Most of these counties are comparable to us, I believe, with exactly, you know, Cherokee's in here. But surprisingly, Cherokee sits down on the list out of those counties. So if you have any questions on these slides, I'll certainly give you a copy of them, so if you want to look at them later and study them more, benefit there. And here's some of the incentive studies up here real quick, it's on that sheet. You know, City of Carrisville, you know, they give bonuses for related field degrees, associate degree, bachelor's degree and master's degree. Give one thousand dollars, two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars bonus. Those are paid once a year for our degrees. That's not tied in with your annual salary. So they pay those bonuses. And then an EMT, they give a bonus of five hundred dollars a year extra on top of their base pay. Fanning County, they have, every five years, they give a longevity increase. Cherokee County, they just have implemented this. They give those bonuses somewhere in Cardensville. Walker County, they give a two thousand dollar bonus. And they've got some other bonuses that I had a hard time understanding how to do that. But those are paid once a year, twice a year. I think they did twice a year bonuses. Then Gordon County, all they, all they had really was you go out and get your hazmat tech certifications to have GSR, which is Georgia Search, Georgia Search, Search and Rescue. Then investigator certifications. These are just some incentive that's given, you know, the other departments. This slide right here, you know, reflects departments that operate like we do. And I think it's fair to compare us to those departments that are running ambulances and driving their guys to the ground with these things, what it amounts to. Again, Dawson County is at the top, Transport Agency, Luntin County, Fanning County, Cherokee County, Gummer County. You'll see those asterisks again, they got incentives. Dawson County gives two dollars an hour for riding on the ambulance. Luntin County has just made this week, my understanding, they're looking to do the same. Cherokee County gives a hundred dollars a day for the employees riding on the ambulance. Again, I've used them a whole lot here in this comparison because. Again, I use them a whole lot here in this comparison because county of two hundred seventy thousand folks. And then Gilmer County, they give also the, the two dollars an hour when you're on ambulance. So again, we're at the bottom when you look at us comparing us to another county, taking out Cherokee. Compared with the size, we're at the bottom. So overall, if you compare us to every department that participated in this, you know, the average salary for firefighter EMT is forty-three thousand, which is about ten percent greater than what our guys are making right now. And again, that's factored in everybody. So I dropped down in the next line right there. This is the EMS transport departments. You're looking, and then working thirteen to fifteen percent difference. The average, I just took an average of all those annual salaries. I didn't take the highs. I just averaged them all. And that's the average that, that the guys are, are getting in our area. And then the paramedics are, are way younger, you know, compared to our region. And I've got right there a note at the bottom on that slide, this type is a two dollar an hour at Dawson. These are for riding on the ambulance. Gilmer's two dollars and Cherokee's a hundred dollars. So just to sum it up, we, we still continue suffering staffing shortages. Again, some days, we don't have a fire truck staff in one of those stations. And that's just being honest. We can't get anybody to work. We, we reach out for overtime, we reach out for the part timers. But we're doing, I think, considering we're doing pretty good with what we got. Guys are stepping up. Our overtime budget's compromised. I mean, that's in relation to some of the vacant positions. I do worry about employee fatigue, working these guys so much. But it's, it's a choice of, you know, working under fatigue or shut the truck down. Right now, there's days that we run out of trucks with ambulance. We get that busy at times. I'd say just about on a weekly basis, all of our amputations are tied up on summer. Work, work continuously considered, are concerned with losing additional staff. I know we've got people right now looking. And I'm asking folks right now to just hang on, see what we can do in this county before they walk, walk out. But you know, I can't blame them, you know, they've looked at that. You know, they got to take care of themselves. But you know, I'm trying to do my job, but look, hang on, hang on. Let's see what we can do with the county because I know everybody cares. So you know, that's it. I'm asking the VOC to review the research that I've given you right there and how to do more if you need more. And look at maybe adjusting salaries for these guys. You know, right there at the bottom, you know, unstable economy generally increases demand on COVID safety. I know I seem to share it back here. When times get bad, the demand increases on us. I saw it down where I worked at before. When times got bad, there seemed to be more fires, more violence, you know, so. And I think we all think about that every day about, you know, what's the matter with the economy? But I want to close and say in basically what I said before, we've got a team out here right now. And we do need more people, but the guys I got, you know, they're, they're working their tails off and working a lot. I say every full-time employee I got, except those that's got another full-time job and are working overtime, trying to help us keep these trucks covered. And you know, that's kept me from having to go mandatory overtime. So I credit these guys for busting their tails for us. And I, I just need you to know that. And as your fire chief, I need to bring this to your attention. So you know, years from now, when she didn't tell us. So, so if there's any questions, I know that was quick. I talked quick and the greatest voice for her. If you've got some questions, everything, those questions.
Just need to ask her if she could delete this off of her video so that it wasn't.
I've got a quick question, Chief.
Yes.
And I know we face the same thing and I know the sheriff department does. But what kind of training are these, do these guys receive? I mean, just to get a guy out, you know, to where he's even functional out in the field. What kind of training do you have to put them through? What does it cost to get them, you know, out there? And then what does that cost us whenever they, they walk away? Because that, that's a definite cost that, you know, we're leave, we're losers whenever they walk away.
I don't know what the cost is if ever sit down and play with those numbers. It takes, if we, if we send a man just to get the basic firefighter training right now, I think it's six weeks straight. And then that's not counting the EMT training. Depends on what program you get into, if you can do it Monday through Friday, which you're looking at another six months probably for EMT. A paramedic usually runs over a, a year to train those folks. So if we lose a, a three-year, four-year medic, let's say five-year medic, it takes a long time to catch up for that loss. So you know, that's all, that's where we need to have a lot of importance on protecting what we have here. Keep what we have where they go out the door. But it takes a lot to get somebody, you got a four, five-year man that's already got his firefighter one and firefighter two. Let's say he's a paramedic. There's a lot of investment there that, that, that person has put forward to even get there. So it takes, it's a big loss. And Sheriff's back there, he's trying to speak the same even for the law enforcement. It, 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 it's a hit. You lose somebody that you've had, let's say for, for your five years, or have to retrain somebody. Because our fire trucks, half million dollars. By the next one, y'all see that, you know, you, you can't just put anybody behind a, a half million dollar fire truck. You know, the ambulances are nearly three hundred thousand. I mean, these guys have got to have some training, mentorship from guys that's been here. So it's, it's, it's tough to get people to, to replace a three-plus-year man or woman.
So Sheriff, I know you're, you're back here as well. And I know public safety as a whole is not just fire and it's not just law enforcement. But I know you guys are, we've had conversations in the past about something we're talking.
You know, what, what I sat here and listened to the chief talk about with all your issues. I mean, we're, we're in that same boat. A lot of times, we just think it's us. But you know, I guess one of my questions to you is, is what are you seeing as far as those that are, you're, you're recruiting? And how are you recruiting some of these individuals to come to work? Because I know with us, we're at the point where we can hire one, a deputy. I mean, right now, we're, we're twelve people short in the sheriff's office. And that's not, those numbers are not uncommon. I look at your, your pay status and I'm sitting here looking at notes that I've got, you know, just comparing Pickens to Gilmer, Gordon, Dawson. You know, we start out non-certified at thirty-six to certified at forty-two thousand. You know, we're at the bottom of that list. Gilmer County is forty to forty-six. Gordon's forty-two to forty-eight. Dawson's forty-two to forty-eight. So how do you compete with those guys?
Right now, it's hard because you can get anybody's attention at thirteen, fifty-nine an hour.
Right. I was in a meeting last week, talking to some folks at the Boys and Girls Club. And they said that they couldn't, they was having a hard time finding employees. And said she was having to compete with Dairy Queen to hire her employees. And people were going to Dairy Queen because they were paying more than we were. And, and I just kind of laughed. I said, well, that's pretty sad there. I said, what are they paying? I looked and I said, Lord, no reason we can't find anybody to work. You know, we're, we're having to compete with Dairy Queen when it comes to salaries. And I know you, you mentioned Cherokee in, in, in a commissioner's seat. You don't want to worry, you know, it's hard to compare us to a larger county. But I'm telling you, I'm not losing guys to North Georgia counties. I'm losing folks that are, that are going south. And I've said this for years. I believe our citizens in this county deserve the same attention and the same quality of personnel, whether it be fire, law enforcement or anywhere else than any other county has. My guys right now can leave Pickens County and go to Cherokee County and start out, you know, fifty, fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars for South County. And, and we know for South County's got a lot of money. They're voting tonight to vote in their non-certified staff, sixty thousand dollars a year. They're just going up in front of the commissioners. I had one leave just a few weeks ago that went over to City of Roswell, starting out another thirty thousand dollars a year as a slick-sleeve police officer. Not only are they looking at the, the salaries, but they're also, once we get those guys, those ten, fifteen-year guys that are here, then they start looking at their, their retirement. We're matching, what, two and a half percent on our retirement? You know, I've got a guy working CID that's been with me for a number of years, top-notch. And, and he's to the point in his career, he's having to look at his retirement and, and trying to decide, can he afford to continue working for Pickens? I echo what you said, Chief. We've got some of the best public safety, law enforcement firefighters of, of anywhere around us. And it's because they want to be here and they want to continue serving. But you know, at some point, you know, they're, they're, they're going to start looking. Got a nice shift sergeant, great job, great young guy. He's, he's, he's in his mid twenties. He, he just bought land. He's, he's just got engaged and is fixing to start his family. He does not want to leave. He wants to be here. This is where he grew up. But I think we're forcing him at some point to, to make a, a decision. Do I make that move and, and support my family or do they suffer and stay here? Not everybody can do what some of us have done over the years. So, you know, again, I, I know it's tough and I appreciate this board taking the time to, to listen. Allow the chief to make the presentation. And while we didn't prepare anything, I'd love to be able to send some numbers to you and let you look at it.
Definitely, so I'd love to have it. I know we've got budget hearings starting at the end of next month, first of October. So those become conversations as we go, but before we start looking at it. Well, we, we had a planning retreat yesterday where we were sitting in the sky. And then one of the, the big topics was the American Rescue Plan money, the, the funding that came from the grant. It's one-time money, but we've got a, a period of time that that can be used all the way through the end of two thousand twenty-four. And I think we, we started the conversation even without this information and this feedback with public safety being a, a big part of, of how are we going to compete? Because what's happened in these other counties is that's the funds that they've used to dump into their public safety. So even if we know it's only one-time money and we know that it's, it's also the trend that every other county around us is doing. So trying not to get left behind. So I think that from, from my perspective, we, we definitely need to sit down and continue to look and try to come up with, with how close we can get to compete. We've already reached out to the ACCG to provide us with some alternatives for improvements to the retirement. They're working on a, a variety of different sets of numbers because we have two different retirement systems. We have the old retirement that expired back in twenty fifteen, sixteen. And then we have the new retirement for employees that were hired after that time. So one is the old pension plan and one's the two and a half percent match that you described before. And they're trying to work up the numbers as to what it would cost the county for different changes, depending on what was changed. And on which one we try to fix. You can work harder to take care of the ones that were in the old plan, but you're not taking care of the new guys that you're describing. Or you can work on your new guys and you're not taking, so it's trying to come up with which one do we start tackling first? And, and what the dollar amount required for it is. So y'all have questions? I, I know I just jumped in.
Question, I'll comment. For a guy that doesn't like public speaking or claims not to like public speaking, you illustrated your point very well. And I, I would say too, that please tell, tell your people, we said thank you, same goes for Sheriff Craig. We appreciate all you guys doing.
Absolutely. Thank you for getting all the numbers together. That's excellent to have.
Thank you, thank you. Where do you go after that? It's kind of a brush that conversation. Let me see. Other general discussion points, I know like we talked about, we did have a planning retreat yesterday. I think that it was very productive. We spent several hours. It felt like, I don't know if y'all were tired when you went, but I was completely exhausted. But we did talk in tone about trying to figure out the best way to make an impact with, with that, that funding. Along with some scheduling and some different things. One of the items, I know it'll be officially announced in the committee, but I'll let you go ahead on one of the things we were trying to.
Yeah, so one, one of the things that I really wanted to work on, if I was like it, was improving the lines of communication between the, the residents of the county and the board of commissioners. So I reached out to Hind and Millie Company today and scheduled our first town hall meeting for the residents on the west end of the county. We are going to do that on September the thirteenth. It's a Tuesday night at six P M. Generally, the idea is we, we give an overview of some projects that are going in, on, in the county, specifically on the west end of the county. And also provide a, an opportunity for some questions and answers at the end. Commissioner Stensel is, has agreed to be there. So if anybody has questions about the day-to-day operations of the county, he can certainly answer those. And I think Commissioner Tatum.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Is going to be there too. So if you can come see us, we would be glad to have you.
And I'm working to get a date together and a place for the east side. So if you have one over on our side too.
I just think it's exciting. That's one of the things we were talking about and we just had a conversation yesterday and he immediately sent an email right before the meeting to say, I've, I've got the place lined up. And here's the date. The willingness to try to listen. I know Sheriff Craig's been through town halls before and, and they're good because you hear a lot of good things. But they're bad because you have to sit there and listen to the complaints probably more than you get to hear the good things. Because most of the people that are happy aren't going to show up. So we'd love to encourage the happy people to show up as well. The, the things that are going good, I think it's good that that feedback come out that you can see. I mean, you, you, you listen to Chief Braker talk about the, the challenges that they're facing. You listen to the sheriff talking about the challenges they're facing. Kirk didn't really talk about his challenges from the road department. They've got the same issues. The, I mean, you've got private companies that are paying C D L drivers significantly more money to, to pull, pull away drivers. But their crew, you just watched them work on, on Top Line Road recently to see the professionalism, the quality of work that they do is, is, is better than where you're going to find anywhere else. So I think that, that the more we do communicating what is happening, I think people start to understand a little bit better where the challenges are. I mean, we are limited with manpower, limited with budget. And we're doing all we can to try to fight to be fiscally conservative. But at the same time, we've got to be responsible for, for, for who's here. So that was encouraging to me when we had our meeting yesterday to, to see and then to jump right in. That's all I have from the discussion. Do any other department heads have anything that you need to update on? I know we, we want a little bit longer than our normal work session.
Want to give a rundown on what's going on with the road?
We've got enough energy to do it.
It's been Grand Central Station, by far, in the last couple of weeks. Cog road contractors still out there. They started the roundabout. They're going in the westbound lane. They're going to go all the way to city limits. They're going to turn around and Pat's going back the other direction. So the crews will be, they made it from the roundabout. They're to the fire station at, at Bent Tree, the Grand View Station. They're there on that lane today. So they'll keep marching on towards the city limits. And like I said, then they'll turn around and, and go the other way. So that, that's roughly where they're going to be at. Top Mine, as you mentioned, it's been a lot of work going on out there this week. And there's been a lot of work done this week. We, we finished up that, that half that we had prepared. But it's really the culmination of a lot of work that the guys have done over the last couple of months. It is, we had two crews out there. So you saw a lot getting done this week. But it's really the culmination of work that they have been hammering along at for the last couple of months. And from this point on, I've got to get utilities moved. The property owners out there that I've talked, they've been great to work with. They very graciously let us move. Amplodas right away over enough to get the poles out of where they're at now, where we can widen the road all the way through. I've been talking to utilities of T D S and all the overhead guys. We're going to try to get everything moved out of the way where we can widen and get a nice wide road all the way through. But that is going to take time. At, at some point, we may have to stop and let them get their stuff out of the way to where we can keep plowing on through. But we are going to keep pushing ahead with it and hopefully have it done by the end of the year. After we got done with the tar and gravel out there, the guys went to patching roads with their chip steel. They hit Twin Mountain Lakes today. Thomason, they've been covering up pipes that we've had tore out and replaced over the summer. Moss Payton's been helping us. They did White Stone where we had that pipe tore out. They worked on it today. And same thing, they're going back on some of our asphalt streets and fixing some of the places that, where we've been repairing cross pipes and whatnot. And I, I talked to Moss today and I think he's going to start on Henderson Mountain next week. We have a pipe out there and then Phil's got a lot of patches that they're going to play on the pit where they've been in and out of the water. I, I, I think he said that's going to start next week.
Yeah, he called me and told me next week was, was his plan. He said two weeks at the absolute most, but next week's when he's planning on trying to get up there. So. Phillip's the one that originally reached out to him and he's looking like this is new.
Well, I mean, I'm supposed to have a crew out there with it. So I mean, I got a plan.
Oh, by the way.
Communications.
We had a conversation about it and I just asked him how soon he thought he was going to get up there. And that's when he told me. So they're doing good. One thing I do want to make is an announcement. We officially were able to move the board of elections office from Pioneer Road. On Friday, they got moved over to the new location at Georgia State Patrol Post. It's, the sign is on the side of the building. What's the sign? If you go into the door, the, the sign's not there, you're going to be met with somebody armed in a blue uniform. Don't vote there. Go to the other side where it says that it's the voter registration office and they'll, they'll help you out. I'm going to embarrass him for just one second, but I have got to, to, to point out one of, one of the, the hardest working individuals I've ever seen. Randy, would you kind of just wave? I won't make you stand up. So Randy and Jimmy are our maintenance workers to take care of buildings and grounds. And they have done, I mean, not, not just maintaining the standard day-to-day operations of trying to get things done. But the, the move required a lot of extra steps to be done. Kirk had members of his team from the sign department. Phillip had his crew go over to be moving team to start moving all the equipment. We avoided having to pay movers. We were able to use the internal staff for getting everything moved and set up over there. But I got an email today specifically on, on Randy and Jimmy. Jimmy's probably not here because he tried to save Randy's life by letting a cabinet that was trying to fall on Randy's head. He stepped in front of it and let it hit him in the side and the back instead, so. So he gets a medal of honor. But I wanna say thank you. I know you don't get thanked enough for the outstanding job. And then the sheriff also provided the staff with Mitch and Bob Olsen that went over and did the repair and converted that building over and did an amazing job with getting that done. It's just been, the minimal amount of expense to actually convert a space is, you'd be amazed at how well they all did by just covering and doing everything that was there. The staff there is extremely excited. They've got room to spread out. If you spend any time in our previous elections office, you'll understand completely. The bar was kind of low. We really didn't have to do a lot, but we've really set far high now. So it's definitely been good. But as far as updates, that's all that I've got. Do you guys have any? I know that Roy's office has worked hard, got the millage, the consolidation chiefs that are necessary for the military to be over to the tax commissioner, who they're not in here today because their goal is to try to get those things out to us, to the school and to all the municipalities. Hopefully by tomorrow morning so that we can then go through and begin the process of getting those meetings scheduled. So thank you to Roy and Stephanie and the rest of the else team for getting that information out very much. One big step to moving forward. All right, with nothing else, we will call this meeting to a close at 5:20. And, or we will be meeting again at 5:30 for our meeting. So feel free to stay or come back.